Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees to order for January 6, 2022. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
All right. Ask the Secretary, please, to call the room.
Mayor Bachi.
President.
Ms. Dumas.
Here.
Mr. Joyce.
Here.
Mayor Alai.
Here.
President Brown.
Here.
Mr. Sulik.
Here.
Mayor DeGea.
Present.
King's here.
All right. Let's approve the minutes from our December 16, 2021.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulik. Is there a question? No question, then. Without objection, the minutes will stand approved as they are printed. Now ask the C D CEO if anyone has signed up to speak in the public session portion of our agenda on a specific topic.
They have not, Mr. President.
Then we will have your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Beginning with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have six active cases among district employees. This brings us to 196 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic, with 190 folks recovered and returned to work. We also have 10 employees with COVID-like symptoms awaiting their test results, and no employees remaining at home because a member of their household has tested positive. So as you will note, these 196 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic actually represent a large increase from the 152 confirmed positive cases that we talked about at the December 16 meeting. So like the national and local trend, we have seen many employees get COVID and recover over the last few weeks. So we've taken steps to keep folks safe, as we have throughout the pandemic, and to ensure the continuity of operation. But as we're during this time of increased cases, I did just want to quickly review some of the steps that we've taken all along, and then some of the immediate steps that we have taken in light of the increase in cases. So this includes reinstating the mask requirements for all employees regardless of vaccination status. It includes bringing back our COVID health screening app to remind sick employees to stay home. The week of December 20, we provided each employee with two rapid antigen test kits. We are also providing new hires with these test kits, as well as a packet of face coverings. We're making the test kits available for any employee who's identified as symptomatic or as a close contact through our HR COVID policy. And beginning next week, we will stagger start times for maintenance staff, and we also have a variety of flexible work arrangement options for non-union employees. And we continue to offer paid leave for vaccination, for the booster, and for any side effects that folks may have. Our HR COVID response team continues to be the point of contact for all COVID issues at the district, and I do want to highlight the fact that they work throughout the winter holidays, they work throughout the weekend, they are taking calls from employees at all hours and doing their work at all hours. So continued big thanks to them. So as we have throughout the pandemic, we'll continue to monitor the situation external and internal to the district and adjust accordingly. But that's just a brief update on where we stand with the pandemic in light of the increase in cases. Now, President Brown, if you had any questions on that?
No, I don't have a question. I think the actions taken at this point are appropriate. I would just ask our general counsel to continue to monitor what's happening at the state level in the event somebody introduces legislation again that would give authority for virtual meetings, et cetera. So just keep an eye out for that.
Yes, thank you. Yes, we appreciate that. All right, so I do, as we move into 2022, I want to highlight the final act in 2021 on social media because of the overwhelming response that we received. I think it's important both at the end of the year and in this time of so much going on, just to highlight this moment because of the overwhelming response that we received from our customers and the overwhelming good feelings that our customers express for our employees. So what you see here is our Twitter page, and on Wednesday, December 22, John Gonzalez, who is our social media mastermind, posted the following tweet. So he posted, "This year has been crazy. Maybe we've been a source of wit and wisdom, levity and brevity. We're proud to serve you, and we have a special message for you." So Shelley Tully and our IT department set up a direct line where folks could call this number, hear this message of thanks from John, and then they could leave a message for our employees. And I do just want to note that on Wednesday, December 22, when I saw this on Twitter, I thought that John Gonzalez had jumped the shark. I mean, he has lost his natural mind. But then, the calls began coming in hourly, even overnight, throughout the holiday weekend. We had more than 1,000 calls, 920 voicemails. The tweet reached hundreds of thousands of social media users with 340,000 impressions. The vast majority of the calls came from Cleveland area codes, but even folks in Canada, you know, got their act together and called into this. So John has listened to over 400 of these voicemails, and here's just a quick sample. So, "A new-time homeowner, I've learned so much from you on Twitter. Being a first-time homeowner, you have helped me. This awesome message really uplifted me. As a fellow unsung hero of the pandemic, working in a grocery store, I want to celebrate and honor the work that you are doing." We had a customer highlight our affordability programs. If you go to the next one, talking about how this has helped their family. We came up into Scene Magazine, "The Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is Making Everyone Cry," which really did kind of exemplify what was happening. And I'll just end with this tweet. "Well done, Sewer District team. You've created a connection among far-flung people and cultivated an understanding of what it takes to make our civilized lives possible." So the calls conveyed gratitude, graciousness, and grace to our employees, and we'll plan to compile a montage of these messages and share those with employees. So thanks to John and the whole team, and thanks to IT, Shelley Tully and her folks for making this happen. It was really quite a fun way to end, you know, what has been...
Thank you. Job well done. Thank you very much.
And that's my report, President Brown.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the CEO? Not, we'll go to our action items. There are few. All right, let's start with authorization to advertise. This is authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Virus Code, Section 6119.10, for Westerly Chemically Enhanced High Rate Treatment Project, with an anticipated expenditure of $84,400,000.
Move for adoption of Resolution 0122.
Motion by Mayor Alai.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Question, just if you could briefly, kind of understanding, this plant has always kind of been a little bit different than the other two because of the chemically enhanced process. Lot of money. Few, it's going to take about four years for us to do this, so it looks like we're going to be treating a lot more flow, influence, et cetera. So what are the highlights of what we're doing here?
President Brown, members of the board, yes, this is Control Measure 3 of the Consent Decree. We currently have an existing CSO facility right next to the plant. You probably know it as SISTOF. It currently has the capacity of 300 million gallons per day. Under this consent decree required project, we will be upgrading that facility, not only in size, but also in the treatment that is offered. So it currently acts as a settling tank, just through gravity. Under this project, we will be implementing enhanced treatment with chemical addition, as well as disinfection, and increasing the capacity from 300 MGD to 411.
Okay, and it's going to take up to four years to complete?
Yeah, from a construction standpoint, you're looking at just over four years, President Brown. Again, the plant, as you well know, is a very small footprint. It's very site-constrained, so a lot of coordination during design with our neighbors in the area, which includes the Metro Parks and the Port Authority. A lot of coordination during design, and there'll be a lot of coordination, obviously, during construction as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other question, comment? There being none without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 01-22.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to issue requests for proposals, starting with request for authorization issued on RFP in accordance with Ohio Virus Code, Chapter 6119, to retain a suite of facilitators to provide training to district employees on various development topics, and also request for authorization issued on RFP in accordance with Ohio Virus Code, Chapter 6119, to retain a suite of instructional designers to design and develop training courses as needed for district employees.
Motion to adopt 2 and 3-22.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Question, is this kind of like a continuing or a continuance of an existing program? Or are we thinking about adding or doing some other different things with this? Is this kind of just a continuation of what we've done in the past?
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Brown and members of the board. Just by way of background, we have traditionally offered training to our employees on a variety of topics. We centralized that training several years ago in the Human Resources Training Department, and during the budget season, which we are in now, all of the directors and departments indicate the training that they would like to have. We review that, and then we develop a training schedule and curriculum. This particular, these two resolutions are asking for facilitators. These facilitators will do the training for managers, for, we have a frontline supervisor training, and for other managerial training. And we also develop computer-based training, some of which is mandatory, like our ethics training, and some is not. And so the Instructional Design Resolution is to enable that to happen.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? If there are none without objection, they're approved.
Resolution 02 and 03-22.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to purchase. I begin to request authorization to purchase annual maintenance and support services from Oracle America, Inc., as necessary for district's enterprise Oracle software databases and applications, beginning January 31, 2022, through May 31, 2023, in total amount not to exceed $1,020,551.89. Request authorization to purchase Cisco Smart Net Maintenance and Support for Technical Support Equipment Replacement and patches and updates from Presidio, beginning January 22, 2022, through January 21, 2025, under the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program, in amount not to exceed $582,382.8. And finally, request for authorization to purchase telecommunication services with AT&amp;T and Verizon service, Verizon Wireless, excuse me, under the State of Ohio Master Service Agreement with AT&amp;T, and the Federal Government Services Administration Contract with Verizon, beginning January 1, 2022, to approved December 31, 2022, in unspecified amounts for each vendor, but in a combined total amount not to exceed $786,200 for all purchases.
Move to adopt 4 through 6-22.
Question by Ms. Dumas.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Question? Question without objection, they're approved.
Resolution 04 through 06-22.
Thank you. All right, let's go authorization to enter into agreement. Start with authorization entered into project agreement, West Creek Conservancy, to provide funding for the acquisition of permanent parcel 45524007, located in City of Parma, and within the Federal Emergency Management Agencies FEMA, 100-year flood plane along West Creek, necessary for operation and maintenance of regional stormwater system, in amount not to exceed $190,000. Request for authorization entered into professional services agreement with Resource International, Inc., TierCon Consultants, Inc., and Answer Advisory, LLC, for stormwater testing and construction inspection services, as needed in support of stormwater project construction activity for the period 2022 through 2026, in amount not to exceed $1 million per agreement, for a total not to exceed $3 million for all agreements. And then the request for authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Case Western Reserve University Weatherhead School of Management, to provide training classes to district staff on various professional development topics, in amount not to exceed $100,320.
Move to adopt 7 through 9-22.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question, if you could, on 0822 briefly, looks like we're splitting this up over what period of time? Four years? Forty-four years, a million bucks, a piece, three contracts. What's up with that?
Okay, similar to engineering and construction, we bring on testing and construction inspection services to help augment district staff at construction sites on the inspection site and do a variety of testing services, soils, concrete, metal, what have you. We've had this in place throughout the stormwater management program. This is the next iteration of contracts. We hope it'll actually last us five years. We'll see. It depends on the amount of testing and inspection necessary. We put this on the street. Number of firms responded. We've chosen three, and each will receive a $1 million contract. This is task order-based, so we'll issue task orders to any of the three as we move the construction program forward.
Okay, so I imagine task orders are going to be issued based on skill level of competency for the various disciplines, so even though there is a million dollars apiece as to whether or not, what they'll actually receive is based on the work schedule?
Yeah, we're going to spread it around. It's on skill set and availability, and, you know, we're going to tap individual firms to keep things smooth and moving forward.
All right, I have no further questions. There are none? No other questions without objection, they're approved.
Resolution 07 through 09-22.
Thank you. Let's see, let's go authorization to enter into contract. Start with request for authorization entered into two-year requirement contract with Quasar Energy Group for Liquid Sludge Removal Services at Westerly Waste Water Treatment Plant, in amount not to exceed $48,500. Request for authorization entered into a construction contract with Proshot Concrete, Inc., for Brookside COVID Repair Project, in amount not to exceed $9,468,918. And then finally, request for authorization entered into a construction contract with Building Integrated Services for District-Wide Electrical Repair and Easterly Service Improvement Project, in amount not to exceed $4,502,000.
Move to adopt 10 through 12-22.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Alai. Question, if you could, 1122, Proshot Concrete, Brookside COVID Repair. Look, sounds fairly extensive, and it looks like a specific type of skill set required for this as well. So what is happening here? What happened, and what do we fix?
President Brown, members of the board, yes, this is a structural rehabilitation of about 2,300 linear feet of failing corrugated metal culvert. This is sort of a unique situation in the fact that not only is it failing, but it's very, it's basically exposed in a lot of places, but in addition to that, it runs through the backyards of about 100 residents. So that was really taken into consideration when we were considering what type of structural repair would be needed to limit that impact on those property owners, as well as to limit the impact on our legal department as it relates to easements and trying to get it to the site. So that resulted in a design of using shotcrete, which is basically spraying concrete within the existing culvert. Obviously, you don't have to take a lot of equipment in, you're able to do that work from within the culvert, but it also requires a very specialized skill set because it is a permanent fix, as opposed to shotcrete that's used in more temporary fixes. So with that, we put real, we made sure within our bid package that we had qualifications in there, that we can ensure that when this is done, said and done, that it will maintain itself for years to come. So we did receive a few bids on the project. We actually got a low bid significantly under the engineer's estimate. The engineer's estimate was $11,900,000. I do think we had some conservatism in our estimate, just because there's a little bit unknowns with this sort of application. And then we also received a second low bid, which we're recommending the board award to that second low bidder at, let me look, at the cost here today, which is the $9 million that you see in the resolution request. The reason we're recommending award to the second low bidder is two things. The low bidder did not meet the qualifications, which was required for them to have a nozzleman that was certified in the application of shotcrete. They did not have that. In addition to that, their bid was also, after evaluation, was unbalanced. And what I mean by that is you look at some of the line items, the costs that they had in there for total bid didn't even match our estimate for the cost of materials.
Quantities as well?
Pardon me?
Quantities or costs?
Costs.
Costs.
Costs. So we are recommended award to the second low bid. It's a company that this is what they specialize in. They submitted certification of six nozzlemen, all certified, that they plan to use on the project.
And this will restore the structural integrity in terms of the, what do I want to say? The structural thickness of the walls and their ability to support.
Correct. It's a structural fix, and not only that, it will also maintain the hydraulic capacity through the culvert, which is also critical in this area.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? There are none without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 10 through 12-22.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go to authorization to amend the purchase. Authorization to amend the purchase with Dale Marketing, LP, under the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program, to provide accidental damage coverage for 120 Dale Latitude 5520 laptops, in amount of $5,457.33, requiring authorization of an additional amount of $1,743.88, thereby bringing the total purchase amount not to exceed $324,684.30.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question? No question without objection, they're approved.
Resolution 13-22.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to amend resolution. This is authorization to amend resolution number 36721, adopted in November 18, 2021, to publish notice calling for bids for purchase of Via Software Support and Maintenance for three-year period in lieu of the authorized one-year period.
Move to adopt 1422.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question? Question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 14-22.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to amend agreement. Let's see, this is authorization to amend agreement number 18006896, with Clinical Leadership Solutions Agreement, number 18006869, with Synergy Marketing Strategy and Research, Inc., and agreement number 18006895, with NAN Masters Group, collectively referred to as the suite of coaches, where leadership coaching services, by increasing the total amount of all agreements by $73,550, thereby bringing the total amount not to exceed $157,550 for all agreements.
Move to adopt 15-22.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Alai. Question? There's no question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 15-22.
Thank you. Let's go authorization of contract modification. One of those. Okay, let's go authorizing final adjusting change order to contract number 20002507, with SCT, Inc., for Dome Brook Regulator Leaf Sewers Project, by decreasing the contract amount by $1,572,753.78, thereby bringing the total contract amount to $2,342,574.21.
Make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question? Question, we're going to move along.
Resolution 16-22.
All right, here we go. We're going to the fun part. Property-related transactions. So let's go, start with authorization to appropriate one-channel easement, one-permanent access easement at property known as permanent parcel number 11425006, 1142507, located at 1201 East 185th Street, City of Cleveland, owned by Shekhar Real Estate Property, LLC, necessary for construction and maintenance of the Euclid Creek-Speilway Fish Passage Project, and to deposit the compensation of $32,000 with the Calhoun County Probate Court. Request for authorization to acquire one-permanent subterranean easement at property known as permanent parcel number 10501008, 10504028, located at 5430 Lake Court, City of Cleveland, owned by the State of Ohio Department of Transportation, necessary for construction and maintenance of shoreline consolidation sewer project, total consideration of $1. Authorization to acquire one-permanent stormwater easement at property known as permanent parcel number 48914001, located at 4461 Sprague Road, City of North Railton, owned by Dennis F. Hiller and Carol A. Hiller, trustees, or their successors in trust, under the Dennis F. Hiller and Carol A. Hiller Living Trust, dated March 8, 1994, necessary for construction and maintenance of Big Creek Flood Reduction near Sprague Road Project, total consideration $2,300. And then finally, request for authorization to acquire one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 77112062, located at 4829 Derbyshire Drive, in the Village of North Randall, owned by Pamela M. Blue, necessary for construction of Bear Creek COVID Improvement Project, total consideration $300.
Move to adopt 17 through 2022.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Question? No question without objection, they are approved.
Resolution 17 through 20-22.
Thank you. All right, let's go authorization to grant a credit. This is authorization district to issue a credit adjustment, total amount $59,441.13, against stormwater charges on known any RSD account, ending in 5162, for Stopper Family Corp., doing business as Maria Gardens at 8334 North Marks Road, Columbia Station.
Make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulik. Question? There's no question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 21-22.
All right, and then finally, authorization of emergency contract. This is authorization to enter into an emergency construction contract with Noronha Sun, Inc., for emergency repair of the Big Creek Interceptor, to ensure the structural integrity of the interceptor and prevent potential ground failure, in an amount not to exceed $75,000, including general allowance, and in excess of 10% of the base contract product, in amount of $14,200, and to declare such contract to be a real and pleasant emergency awarded without formal bidding and advertising.
Move for adoption of Resolution 22-22.
Motion by Mayor Alai.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Question? Briefly, what happened?
Go ahead, Frank. Sorry, President Brown. Go ahead, Frank.
I think I got it.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Frank.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. In this case, we had a notification from the Ohio Utilities Protection System to mark our infrastructure near I-71 and Bel Air Road. There's some human error that took place here, and this was marked incorrectly, and then contractor 4ODOT penetrated our sewer in a couple locations. So going forward, we are working on providing additional oversight in this area to hopefully prevent this from happening again.
So literally, oops, huh?
Literally, yes.
I don't think they use those terms.
Okay. No other questions? Then without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 22-22.
Thank you very much. That takes care of our action items for today. Information items we have. Okay, let's go to open session. Anything for the good of the order? Public session, Madam CEO, anybody sign up on any subject matter to speak on this portion of our agenda?
They have not, Mr. President.
They have not. Okay. Let's see, executive session, I believe we have eight matters.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Pursuant to Highway Code Section one two one point two two G one, I hereby move to enter into executive session to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Joyce.
Yes.
Mayor Ali.
Yes.
President Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Sulek.
Yes.
Mayor DeGee, yes. Mayor Bachi.
Yes.
Okay, we will go to executive session and return shortly. Are we going, are we going to the large room?